Yes, if we have to.
All right. Call this meeting to order. Call this meeting to order of the Southwest Looking Board of Education. It is July the 18th at 7:00 PM. I'd like to recognize our visitors both here and online. Would like to stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of Mrs. Duff and Mrs. Bortles.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was awesome.
I said that was, but they're adorable. Mr. Jones, would you like to call the roll, please?
Mrs. Moore.
Here.
Mrs. Spindler.
Here.
Mr. Vincent.
Here.
Mr. Zani.
Here.
Mrs. Engel.
Here. We have a quorum. We can continue. Public participation, anything back in the... Okay. Need a motion for adoption of the agenda?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Mr. Jones?
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. Motion passes. All right, we have several presentations. Well, we can start with Garmin and Miller.
Thank you. As far as the new builds, Clay will be giving you an update on that, both under construction. I'm sure you're driving by seeing the progress, so I'm sure you're anxious to hear his report. As far as what's in design, we're designing the head and elementary renovation. We've been working with the committee through that design, and we have schematic design that will be finished up at the end of this month. At that point, we'll put cost less than us to it, and we should have those budget costs by the end of August. As far as the Watkins High School renovation to the middle school, that one you're all see tracks a little behind that now. It's a bigger building. The key is both of those will be ready to start construction once the new buildings are done. They'll phase that way. But we have some preliminary layouts of how the building could be reprogrammed to figure needs for the middle school. And we'll be getting with the school and that committee to review those. And that schematic design is on track for, I think it's October schematic design. One of the main things we wanted to cover today is back on the artifacts. We have Andy Sewell from Lawhorn. They did the Phase 2 work. Andy's going to just kind of recap the whole artifact, what triggered that, and a couple phases that you went through. We have some select pieces, some of the more interesting pieces. He's going to just talk a little bit about those. There might be ones that you want to consider putting those on display. He's also going to talk about options you have. We've talked that SHPO, the Historic Preservation Office for the state, would like to have those artifacts and loan them back to you, and he'll explain what that looks like and what options you have. And of course, answer any questions you have too. So I'll turn it over to Andy.
Thank you for having me. Everyone hear me okay? I'll just go over to the artifacts and do my presentation here. So essentially, what kicked everything off here was we had a... Before any work could be done on your site, we had what was called a Phase 1 archaeology survey to see if there's any type of important archaeological sites out there. A different company did the Phase 1 work. They went out there, surveyed the whole field, and they found a couple artifacts that were really interesting because they're rare. And this piqued their interest enough that they recommended to the State Historic Preservation Office that these things need to be looked at a little farther because it could be important. And the Preservation Office agreed. And that's where we came in. We put in a bid, and one of the... Work to do was called a Phase 2 assessment to see if anything here was eligible for National Register of Historic Places. So we went back out there, and we did a kind of more intensive survey over the entire area. We collected everything we found on the surface. We had another subcontractor come out and do a geophysical survey to see if there's anything below the ground. And we tested where he said, "Well, these things might be something." We didn't find anything. We analyzed the artifacts or distribution. Although we did find some interesting stuff out there, ultimately, we came to the conclusion it wasn't significant enough to meet eligibility standards for National Register of Historic Places. So, and we recommended that they be cleared for cultural resources, and SHPO concur with that. So where we stand now is we now have a big collection of artifacts, and what are we going to do with that stuff? Typically, because the State Historic Preservation Office likes to have all the stuff come back to them for long-term curation at their facilities, mainly because we're set to handle large collections. But one thing we also like to do is we're very open to the idea of curating something and then loaning parts of the collection back out for display. We're really, we're really up on that because they don't like to have everything sit around back in their warehouse and nobody ever sees it again. Somebody wants to display something, that's all the better. And we do have some artifacts that are fairly interesting that would be good for, for display. I can pull out a couple if people wanted to see a couple. If we have time for that, I don't know. That's up to you guys.
Sure.
Let me put this down for a second. So right here, this is a base to what's called a Brewherton Point. And this is a late Archaic projectile point that'd be put onto a spear or a dart shaft. It's made out of a local Flint Ridge church. It's been heat-treated to make it nap better. And this dates to about, oh, about 4,000 years ago or so. So that was found out there. And we found stuff a little earlier as well, this one. And this is called a Phoebes Point. This dates to early Archaic, which is right after the end of the Ice Age. And that dates to about 8,000 years ago. So you can kind of see the kind of range of stuff we've got going on out here. There's a lot of different things. You also have something a little... Not just hunting activities, but there's also, this is a, looks like just a rock. It's actually a pestle for grinding, so people are also chipping the hammer stones. You hull it like this and grind against another flat rock, you can grind plant material down, make stuff like, we made a small, it's a flower, grind nuts until it's like a paste or something like that. So there are different activities going on out there. It's just that everything was up in the plow zone. There wasn't any pits or features or anything like that, and that's why it wasn't... Because they're significant. But this type of stuff we have here is still valuable for educational purposes. It's stuff that looked really good in a display. It would help educate students about what was going on in the area where now we're going to school and learning things. So in terms of getting this thing set, we do have to go through the curation process, which I believe we looked at it, and we offered a quote of something roughly around $3,000 because we have to, we have to curate everything for state, not just selected things. Once we collect it, they want it. So that's probably the next step on this stuff is setting that up. That's where we decided to go, that route.
You said $3,000?
About $3,000 for labor and some of the, we have to get something special. We can't just give them paper packs. It has to go in a special...
Zip block.
Plastic, even special zip blocks, you know, yeah, a little thicker than this, or about four mil.
So to accept a donation, the state has to have it curated?
Because, because of, it comes from land that was under control of the state or local municipality. There's a section in the Ohio Revised Code that speaks to that and says that SHPO has a say in what goes on with that. It's a little vague, so I think it's open to interpretation and negotiation. But typically, their stance is pretty firm that if it comes from a state or local municipality-owned land, that they could first say in the disposal of those artifacts. So. Any other questions?
That's fine. We have talked, when we sat through and looked at most of those artifacts that one day, which was, to me, very exciting to hear everything that you knew. And Andy's unbelievable in terms of his knowledge. I probably asked him too many questions as I normally do, but two things. One of the things that I was going to recommend, which probably will be shot down tonight, would be to only curate the items that we kind of separated out because I thought that they could go into some kind of shadow box. And during that particular discussion we had with him, he would help us come up with... You see these in like museums where there might be a card or a stand next to it that would do exactly what he did to you tonight with just two or three of them. Give a little history of them and the relevance to the area, something like that. Now, I'm a little, I mean, I'd be a little... You'd have to push me a little bit to do some of the items in the back, although they're relevant and they are substantial from a certain point of view. They just, they didn't stand out. They were just pieces of, to me, flakes and things like that. To spend money on that was going to be tough. But I was going to recommend to do the curation of the items that we had singled out. But you mentioned we couldn't do that.
Okay, I think, what we have here is, I think we're talking about two different things. Like when I'm talking about curation with the State Historic Preservation Office, why I mean is they, anything has taken, they take it and restore it for a long term, and that's their curation. And I mean, what we're talking about here is actually the type of display. And that's two different things. They want, they don't want you to throw out anything or, you know, stuff like that. And they prefer to have it, the collection, so that other researchers, if they want to, know where it is and come get it and access it easily. If anybody ever wanted to do that, they'd know where it is. It's right there at the Historic Preservation Office. But what they generally do is you curate it, and then they do, they would do a loan for, say, some of these pieces here on the table. Say, "These are the ones we would like to have back for a long-term, you know, ongoing loan." And I believe in the last, in our last meeting, I remember I mentioned about they have something similar going on with Buckeye Lake Museum, where we're having pieces of a canal boat that was dredged up. Those have been selected free, large pieces, and we shipped them out to Maryland for a couple of years, stuck and conserved them so that it wouldn't degrade or rot. And it came back looking really nice, and then we're going to go back eventually, get on display over at Buckeye Lake. There's an agreement for them to have them to do that. So that's basically what's going on there, is that SHPO wants to take care of all this stuff. But they're usually very amenable to loaning stuff out for display or educational purposes. So does that make sense?
It does.
Okay.
Now, I was, my brain was thinking that, you know, we could give them everything in the back because relevant-wise, I think the ones up front were the ones that had the, a nice story to them. Those would be the ones I'd feel okay paying for, to have cleaned, labeled, and made these signs next to them.
Yeah.
Cleaning those back there, that's, that's tough, but I can understand the position of SHPO.
Right. They've all been cleaned, but SHPO says, "Yeah, we don't want you just taking stuff and dumping it on our doorstep." They especially want it to come in repaired so they can, so it can stay. Like, these will decay. The information on them is not there. So they want like, like artifacts will have a label on them with a specific number, so it's all be able to track. Comes out bad, you can find where it goes, stuff like that. So that's the type of preparation that goes into it. And that's why the labor cost can seem a bit high is because you've got someone sitting there taking each one of these artifacts that's big enough and putting a label on it. So you can imagine, it's a little bit of ink writing.
The $3,000, is that for just what's on the table or everything?
It's everything. But I mean, if, if for some reason you could just do what's on the table, it would be incredibly cheap because that's, that would take you only a couple hours to prepare something like that. But we've got, you know, several hundred artifacts we have to go through and figure out which ones actually get labeled or big enough to get labeled, you know, and then go through, put them all into the special bags. And then, you know, give it over to SHPO. SHPO has its own fee you have to pay as well, so.
So I have, I just want to re-clarify what you said, what I heard you said, say, was there, they, under Ohio Revised Code, they can lay claim to all of this stuff because of a public municipality ownership?
Yeah, I believe it's, yeah, 149 dot 43, I think. I think that's what it is. I don't know it quite off the top of my head, but...
But they're, so, so they're basically saying it's their stuff, but we have to pay to have it. We're the ones that have to pay to have it curated, to give to them, even though it's... That just doesn't make very much sense to me at all.
But we can keep it. That's not, you said...
You'll need to, you'll probably need to talk to them, figure out what, what's, where exactly the jurisdictions really lie. Because I think it comes down to the lower levels. I mean, when we're dealing with state, like with ODNR, yeah, you just use agencies, it's clear. But I think when it comes down to really these small municipalities, I don't think, at least for me, it's not quite as clear where, where those things lie. Because as I said, that Revised Code is kind of vague.
My problem is grasping that if they want it, they, but we have to pay for the curation.
Right.
So...
And you said there was a fee?
Yeah, it was, yeah, I figured I'd talk to someone else about this, about these things in another project. And again, it was hard to grasp that because it is all state stuff, so there should be a fee.
Right, to give it to us.
The thing, but...
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah. But I think partially because SHPO is a quasi-state agency, we're also, we're also kind of also a nonprofit as well. We're not really a full state agency at all. So we're kind of existing in this weird limbo. Whereas in other states, SHPO is definitely a part of a, sometimes a part of the DNR or something like that. So it's, it gets kind of wonky in Ohio.
The problem I'm having is we did a Phase 1. We had to go to them, and they thought that we needed a Phase 2, which cost us a lot more money.
Right.
Which, you know, I questioned, do we need a Phase 2 anyway? But, you know, whatever. So we've paid for that. Now they want these that they made us dig up.
Right.
And they want us to pay more. I just have an issue giving back.
That's understandable. I mean, again, it's something that's kind of, we brought up the discussions with someone from SHPO. So. And we can, we can also help you negotiate with that as well. We know, we have people, the current deputy Historic Preservation Officer, officer who used to work for our company. We've got people, so we're on good terms with them. We can maybe try and figure out a way we can get around some of this stuff, maybe.
So do we have an option to say no? They're our property?
He said it was...
Maybe.
It's not clear. Probably, so we gotta reach out to our attorney.
Yeah, I think we need to.
I think based on the budget things that are going on, I think, by golly, let's just wait a minute. Our governor's pretty quick to nick some money out of her pocket.
You can reach out. How do you reach out to our school attorney and file?
$3,000 is one kid in the, in our, right?
Plus, plus a fee.
Right.
To drop it off at their thing.
That's included.
Four millimeter zip blocks.
So is that included in $3,000?
Yeah, that's all included. So I'm just saying that's what, in that, is all the summer stuff, you know, so.
Wow. There's, there's always the, I mean, the area that's been studied now, I don't believe would have to be restudied. But we own quite a bit of land out there that would probably still have to undergo additional surveys. We were talking about that when we were doing Phase 1. We've purchased more land out there. So if we wanted to expand buildings, where I'm going with this is we'd want to, want to keep some kind of relationship, positive relationship with SHPO. Because I, you'd almost rather have them clean, categorized, and give them back to us than have to be forced into another Phase 1 or Phase 2, or Phase 2 later on because of not knowing exactly what they found and seen some of this. I'm not saying it would, it would be relevant. I'm just, it's something to keep in mind that the more they know about this existing site here might be helpful when they make a decision if we have to get another nationwide permit for other things on that site. Because they, you guys have already stated, they kind of control that. They should make us do that.
And because of a nationwide permit, you don't just have SHPO, you have a core of engineers who are the federal agencies ultimately responsible for this stuff. So they need to follow Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act, so that comes all the way back down.
So we're going to do it anyways.
Yeah, you kind of need, you need to do something with it. When you have to do something with it, though, I mean, there's nothing that says you can't really sit on it for a while, too, so. I mean, they like, they like having stuff as soon as they can get it, but I've seen collections sit around for quite a long time, too, so.
How long will it take to curate? You said this stuff at Buckeye Lake was a couple of years?
Well, that, that's something completely different. Remember, that was about, those are pieces of that canal boat that we took out of there. And we're talking about, you know, something the size of that podium, a big piece of wood. This, this wouldn't take us very, I think maybe to lit... We have to go and ask SHPO for a number for the collection. When we get that number, then we can go ahead and put the number, the artifact number on everything. It'd probably take about a week, week and a half total. And then, but then again, if we're going to negotiate with SHPO anyway about some of this stuff, it might be that they say, "Well, do you really want all this stuff?" Some of this stuff, like maybe some from that farmstead. Maybe we can say, "Hey, here's a selection of this stuff. Can we keep this part of it and get rid of the rest?" Or put it, not get rid of it, put it somewhere else, but not curate it. That might be an option. It just depends on how they, how they're feeling about what these sites are, you know. Probably not for prehistoric sites, and maybe even not for the historic one. But, but the fact that the art eligible might be something in your favor, too. They just don't like seeing stuff thrown away because once it's run away, you can't get it back, so.
We were also hoping to work with the architects, and it can be added on later. It would be, it's somehow incorporated in the interior design, maybe a shadow box or two. But we first have to find out how much space, you know, these objects are. Do we really want to look, like you said, at the, per se, homestead items? Do we just want the old artifacts from the, you know, the Ice Age, that type of thing? So the sooner we can figure out what we have might help us there. But like you said, there's no rush, and you can always put a shadow box up later. It's just fitting in with the design, you know, we just may have to make some modifications later. That's the reason I mentioned to you that in any kind of correspondence, that an answer sooner than later would be helpful in the design part of it. It's, it's not a, I mean, if we want to hold on to them, check with the attorneys, work with Lawhorn and working with SHPO, that's fine, too. I'm not trying to rush you, is what I'm trying to say.
Okay.
What would it cost to check what the attorney is?
I don't know. I mean, probably $250 an hour, so.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking of. Anyway.
That's true, too. We don't want to pay more legal fees than what it'd be to just clean them. I just don't, I feel like the state's bullying us, and I don't like that.
The other thing Eric mentioned was the original contract with them, there is about $3,000 left over that hasn't been used yet.
Right.
So there's a potential that we wouldn't have to pay more of a pocket than what you originally approved as part of the Phase 2 study. Also, they didn't spend it to come back to us, but we wouldn't, probably wouldn't spend anymore. About $3,000 is what Eric said.
How much did you say wasn't spent?
About $3,000.
Okay, so it's a wash.
It's pretty close to a wash. I don't know exactly what the number is, but it's probably pretty close to a wash.
Yeah, we already authorized.
Jerry authorized it for the Phase 2.
How much was the Phase 2 total? Do you remember?
Forty-seven thousand, forty thousand, Phase 2.
Something like that, because we had to get the geophysical survey in there, and that's another 12 grand to just on some...
May I say mid-forties?
Well, I'll offer a motion to move ahead with the curation with the $3,000 that we feel we have left over. And then we'll be done with it, and there'll be no lawyer fees or anything like that.
Quick question. If we did do that, they're still our property?
It's, it would probably be considered state because they're loaning it back to you. So it's not, yeah, it's...
But we're going to have to do this regardless.
Regardless, I think that's the best way of probably going forward, especially considering you have more land. That's, like Bob said, it's probably going to need survey. And having, going, going to SHPO and just explaining your situation and saying, "Look, we know this is coming up. We've got this, this here, we want to curate it. We're concerned about cost. What can we do?" What, you know, and also, you're right, upfront, from saying, "We want, we want to put stuff on display. We'd like to get some of it back in the near future for, for educational displays." We want to put that, because that's something when you, you might want to put in a curation agreement with them.
I'll second it, but I'll second it, can I make an addition to it? That when we do speak with SHPO, we say all this stuff that we would like it back, but we'd also say that this is what we have in the budget that we have already approved. So whatever money is left over from the original approval, this is what we got to spend. Take it or leave it. Is that okay?
Yeah, was the $3,000 pretty firm or?
It's fair. I mean, we're...
It's a estimate.
We, no, it's fairly firm, but I think we can, we can do things.
They can decrease their...
We, we can, we can work with you guys for sure. We're not out the gouge, anybody. We just want to see things done well, done right.
Right.
This would go up to that dollar amount then, not a dollar more.
We won't go over at all. We do what we could to stay, stay, as much as we could stay under, we'll do it.
Okay. Any more discussion? Mr. Jones?
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I am...
I know.
President?
Yes, yes.
Devin asked me, and I did reach out to the museum here in town.
Yeah.
They've not returned a call yet, but again, as we're working through this, I know we want to get the relics that are good for us, but there may be some that they, they might want to later. Like Andy had said, I think they'd rather have them on display than in a cabin down in the basement, so. If they reach back to me, I'll tell them what we're going to be doing, that we're going to more than likely take some of the more significant finds and put them in our buildings. But if they'd like to join forces, that we'd be open to that.
I think that's, I think that's a great idea, that let them, they can, they can get loaned pieces as well, I guess.
Yeah.
Be fine with everybody. You guys are good? Garmin, Miller? Okay. Robertson, construction?
All right. We are in month two of the reports right now on site. Some of the big highlights, we've been able to get the elementary stone pad, elementary pad stone plus the back playground area that we're using as layground, or laydown. And we have got our first shipment of rebar for the concrete footers and the insulation for the footers. So we are starting to stage the material on site and looking and planning to start putting the first footer in on July 22nd. So that's, that's about a week behind what we originally planned, fighting the rain and the mud. But I think we're still in good shape there. So for the elementary school, I think we talked last month about we were being under monitoring for the settlement. Those have all passed. We had all four set points pass. And right now, at least for the 4-5 school, what we're dealing with the most right is southwest-looking sewer and water. We've got the water service coming into the building. There was a vault that came out, what we think was probably the way it should be. There was some discrepancy of interpretation that we've been back and forth probably about seven times in the last two weeks. But I think we do have a final approval on that, so we will be able to finish that water pit and get water to the site. That's scheduled to start, that's scheduled to happen on the 22nd also, so that could be a big day. At the new high school, we are now in monitoring for settlement. We've had the first reading, which did well, it passed. We're waiting on the second reading to be able to proceed with that pad. We're currently, from the contract side, kind of almost right where we were with the elementary. We're currently, from the contract side, kind of almost right where we were with the elementary when I reported last week. We're finalizing the smaller contracts right now. We're buying out some of the stuff under the general trades contract and getting things in order. We're, we've had our pre-construction meeting for the high school. We're developing the baseline, we're trying to finalize the baseline schedule. That's probably another two weeks out. The elementary baseline schedule is supposed to be finalized tomorrow. So that will give us a good guide to keep working towards. From the financial side, I'm really happy to be able to report where we're at today with the site work. The site work typically has a lot of exposure to an owner that, of potential problems. We're really coming out of this so far very good. There's been a few undercuts that we've had to do, not many and not sizable. So that's positive. And the limited changes that we've had, I think right now in regards to the site work, we're probably at like $15,000 of changes. And that's great news to be in the state that we're at right now with that dirt and with the amount of rain and, and the weather we've had. There's been no use of CMR contingency on any of the projects, which is another good thing to report. For the site's improvement package, really what, I mean, you're seeing the stone, but you haven't seen much going on. There's been a lot of activity out there. Really, they've been working on the underground sanitary storm and water lines. So if we go to the next slide, what I've tried to do, showing up a little bit, but the green lines are all the utility lines that have been installed over the last three, probably three, four weeks. Really, you can see where the focus is coming at the elementary school, where we're supposed to start first. And then we're going to be moving more towards the high school to get that done. And the focus there is to get all the lines in, to be able to get the parking lots in, to get the parking lot stoned so that people are driving on stoned areas versus through the mud, tracking the pad up and making it a mess. So we're trying to keep it very organized as we bring these contractors onboard. We potentially could have probably started footers a week earlier, but that week that we would have done just to start the footers would have probably caused a lot of disruption in the paving and the parking and, and the mud and building later on. So I think it's a wise step to make sure that we're organized and set up before we start bringing the other contractors onboard. Today and tomorrow, they're going to be stoning the parking or the bus loop, which is going to also extend our parking area to allow room for other contractors to come onboard and park and have lay down. And there'll also be stoning the back area of the high school lot, again, to allow areas for material to come on site. So we are on the verge of kind of both of these projects really breaking loose. It's pretty exciting. August should be a great month. We're hoping we're getting out of the rain and we'll be able to see a lot of production start to happen with bringing the underground plumbing into the building pad, starting the footers, masonry wall is starting to come up. That should actually be happening on both sides as we go through the next month, which we will finally see something come out of the ground. Really, the status that we're in, if we look at the submittals and for the four or five building, we're probably halfway through some of the submittals in that area. The high school, we are just starting submittals for that to be able to get approvals on those to release the materials. There's been very few. In fact, I think the first one that went in was for the rebar on the concrete. So that will be starting to transform over the next month. And then we're also starting some of our pre-construction, pre-installation meetings over the next two weeks. We'll be doing the concrete and masonry for the elementary. And then probably two weeks after that, it's going to be very competitive. But a lot of this stuff, I'm going to tell you, here's what we're doing on the elementary in the next month. I'm going to tell you, we're doing the same thing on the high school. So they're following each other and we hope to keep that track going. We did have a safety audit on site. It was an internal, our safety people came out to the site and reviewed it in July. No incidents, so there's nothing to report. And that's two months with no issues and we hope to see a lot more of those.
Right.
Then I also included some pictures in there. You've got, you had to get the stone.
There might be some issues with the guy on the back.
And we've also got the detention pond and we've got the skimmer installed for the detention pond. That's going to be another critical piece, trying to get all the water away from the pads and getting that functional. And then the team presented a gift to Mr. Janelle yesterday at our four or five progress meeting. And we have affectionately nicknamed, nicknamed him the Drone.
Is it required that he wear that when he's on site?
Absolutely. And it's very easy to keep track of where he's at.
I noticed off of, and I may have just missed this for years, but off of main, off of 40, there's like a drive off. It doesn't really go anywhere. It looks like it ends right at the fence. Is that where the road will be?
Yes.
Okay.
That will be the main entry.
Okay, okay.
Once we complete. Right now, we're just using that for real heavy loads that come in.
Okay.
We do have another permit to get, even though we thought we had it covered. We just found out today that Etna Township is going to require a special permit for us to bore under smoke road, even though our right of way permit told them we were going to bore under smoke road. So we've got a meeting with John Carlyle. We're trying to set up a meeting next week. Two issues, one, the boring, and second, smoke road's already starting to deteriorate. So we felt it would be best to meet with him upfront. Let's come up with a plan and try to resolve it. The road just can't handle the trucks that are coming in. And we've got anywhere from 10 to 15 stone trucks coming right now on a daily basis. And we'll be following those up with concrete trucks. So we're already seeing the wear and tear. We just want to try to make sure that number one, it's good for the community. We take care of it. Number two, we, we work as, try to work as a team to deal with this issue that's going to be ongoing for the next year.
Make sure your guys are drinking lots of water tomorrow because it's, we're going to be really hot and I don't want to see a safety thing on.
You know, actually, actually, we did a shutdown today company-wide for exterior work was supposed to shut down between 1:00 and 2:00 o'clock today because of the heat index. So we gave the contractors the opportunity that if you want to shut it down, go ahead and shut it down. Our employees were mandated to shut down. But yes, that is, is a concern.
Mrs. President?
Yeah.
I'm just going to wait and see if anybody had anything else to say.
No, absolutely.
Three things real quickly. When he showed you pictures of stone, Rick and I were out at the site making a tour. When you get an opportunity, you'll see the stone. But to let the voters know that we did put in a radon system, you'll see on the main pads that there's a different stone going in than maybe over the top of the parking lots. So both new builds have that and we're emphasizing that in our renovations as we're hopeful to get them there too. So that's one thing to point out. The second thing would be that I'm working with Clay that for potential site visits for the board. We just can't have people show up and expect to tour the site. What we're looking at is maybe starting in August or September at maybe around five or so, because Clay's going to be here, we'll be here, and it would be open to the board.
That'd be great.
To go through the site. Now, if there happens to be something that construction happens to go on, we may have to cancel that night, but we're looking at that night. But obviously, we would have to, he's already mentioned safety. Everybody that goes on site has to go through a safety training course. And, you know, you get a little number and stuff like that to stick on your helmets. But we're hoping to start that part of it, at least while, you know, construction's going on that you can visibly see.
That'd be great.
Awesome.
So we're trying to line that. We're not going to get you out there when there's really nothing right now. It's just dirt. And again, that explains why there's no additional drone pictures, but there's some really awesome ones on my computer that we can share. But I think everybody's seen enough dirt. But the stones are going out. We'll try to get you out there as a board so that you can kind of see things as things are happening. We haven't set anything up official, but as soon as we do, we'll, we'll share that with you.
And just one thing for those tours, it sounds, it seems obvious, but no flip flops or open tone shoes or please don't wear heels. It's all happened before, so.
So if we want it five, there'd still be time. Maybe if it's like 45 minutes or an hour, you could go home and change in. If you, you feel necessary, you change before the board made it, something like that.
Any questions? Thank you.
Hill International, Julie, please.
See, they can.
Yeah, that's right.
I did, I did the reports for you. I did send it over later this month. And basically, these guys covered everything pretty well as far as what's going on. We will be starting to get drawings on Etna. So we're back into design. And then we will follow with the high school through the coming months. The work is underway. He showed you some really good pictures and gave you a good idea of where that is. My pictures are not that good because I didn't have much time to shoot. I had another meeting and now there's one. We do have footer construction starting July 22nd, which is basically happening, isn't it?
It is.
And then the high school's about a week behind. It's going to start in the middle of July. Everything's underway. The, our, our big upcoming task will be the estimate reconciliation for Etna. You'll get those drawings still in thirty minutes. And so they will, they will get estimates and we'll come back to the whole process. I always talk about risk because that's what I do. There's always a chance of a potential schedule impact of some kind. We have to go through that whole estimate budget reconciliation GMP negotiation for two more schools. We also always mention the allowances. That's what you have for your later packages, which should be working our way through the process as well. And the weather, they've worked with the weather really well because we can watch right now. And we are, you know, we're committed. We've not made any initial commitments. We just have change orders coming through. So they'll probably show up next month. So we get them all first and then. Do you want me to talk about the regulations?
That'd be Rick. I mean, yeah, if we're talking about it, fine.
I did not leave any action items out there because the day I had to do this to get it done, I was unsure. We, there is some work that needs to be done at the middle school, current middle school, to hold the swing space, hold the, hold the little guys, the swing space. And it is essentially HVAC, some paving around the school and the high school and some roofing work and sort of warm, safe and dry work. And we were hoping that we could get that indoor swing space allowance. We got a GMP from Robertson. It was enough money that the district would have gone out to bid to make that happen and the timelines just weren't working. So we asked Robertson to put together a GMP for it, which they did. And we got that last week, last Wednesday. And we sent off to the OFCC for approval presence, their project, and it got sort of stalled there. And so we did not get full approval on it. We didn't get any approval actually. And the person that has to approve is headed down to the family and is unable to approve it. So in, in a little bit of panic, several people's, or we're called your attorneys and they said, uh, urgent necessity today. So you will be asked to approve an urgent necessity resolution, not an action, it's a whole resolution, allowing Robertson to move forward with that work. And we're going to reserve your right to continue to discuss that with the OS. So that you guys can get the HVAC systems right sixteen weeks out.
Sixteen, seventeen.
So we're not going to even hit the air conditioning season for that at this point. But we've got to get your roof dry and the drum, the pavement over there is bad. So I don't know if they're going to approve a piece of it, a part of it, or none of it. But you have a long project and lots of time to talk about it. So we'll see what happens in the future, but we've really got to. I call maintaining your asset. You've got to get that so that we don't have any additional degradation on what's going on there. Because you need that school for about five more years. So are there any questions regarding that?
The set of site swing space that the state had would not cover the classroom space that we would need. Even if we pulled all three elementaries together, it was just around $300,000 per building. So that would be $900,000 to house probably 800 kids and try to feed them. We talked about that at the beginning of the project and we just, it wasn't feasible. That's why we included the middle school and why we thought the state would be going along with this. Again, the right people are not there available to make the decision. We're hoping it's positive, but we got to, we got to dry out that middle school. When it rains, it literally 55 gallon jugs or buckets get filled. We've got to dry it. If we lose it, who knows what will happen in the future. Water gets in there over time and you never want to talk mold. You never want to talk any of that stuff, but five more years, as he said, so it's pretty important.
I don't know about you guys, but I really feel like it's better to have kids in the school, even if it's a big boys' school for a little time. It's the largest. Because you've got the kitchen, you've got the restrooms, you've got everything.
We just would not have had enough money.
Are there any questions on that? Do you want me to stay until you get free to have?
No, I think we got covered.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
All right. Here we have a request to speak on agenda items, Teamsters 413 and Southwest Looking Education Association. How about approval of minutes, June 20th, 2019? Need a motion to approve?
Some of.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Zini?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. That motion passes.
Mrs. President?
Yeah.
May I interrupt just a second before these gentlemen have to leave?
Absolutely.
Brian, Brian Wolfson here this evening. I think Eric had mentioned some of the things that they're doing. But in August, there will also be an update on the athletic facility.
Right, okay.
So I don't know if that was mentioned as, so just to let everyone know.
Yeah, perfect. Yep. Sounds good.
That's correct, right?
I think he had mentioned that before, so, yeah. All right, financial report, Mr. Jones? You want a motion to approve first and then we'll discuss?
Motion approval.
Second. Mr. Jones?
Full aligns your executive summary for the month and fiscal year ended June 3rd, 2019. The month was a fairly routine month. Revenues were higher than we expected for the month and expenditures were lower than we expected for the month. The year date, our revenue is about $541,000 higher than we expected and our expenditures were like $712,000 less than what we expected. So actually overall, we're about $1.2 main dollars better than we anticipated at the end of this fiscal year. So we end the fiscal year in really good shape. It's going to be helpful to carry over future years. I don't really have anything specific to talk about other than the fiscal year ended very well. And we're starting a new fiscal year. Is there any specific questions about anything?
Rick, I see electric bill $43,000. I'm just sitting here thinking, with this heat and stuff, that's probably going to put that even higher.
Yeah, well.
Coming up. Do we do anything to lower the, or raise the temperature or whatever? Or we still have to keep, maintain because we've got people in the building?
I think we tried to with the controls overnight. I'm not sure they work as well as they want to.
Yeah.
Hopefully, definitely, once the renovation is done, new buildings are done.
Be better.
We had to have the vulnerability to at night shut off and then in the morning kick it up earlier so it's ready for kids to come in. So hopefully there'll be better energy savings with these new buildings through better performance of the, of the control system. So I think we try to do the best we can do with it, but probably a lot of times we're leaving it running.
Currently, we have a struggle as the humidity builds up. The machines are so old that we can't take it back out. So a lot of times they're running 24/7. Currently, we have a struggle as the humidity builds up, the machines are so old that we can't take it back out, so a lot of times, they're running twenty-four, seven.
Yeah.
Okay. But the new systems, as Rick said, should be more efficient.
Good.
All right, any more discussion? Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. Motion passes. We have, uh, personnel consent calendar, A through M.
Motion to approve, uh, item six, A through M.
Second. Any, any discussion on any of those? All right, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. That passes. Business items. Probably gonna have to take these maybe one by one, so we've got seven A, resolution declaring intent to proceed with election of the question of substitution of an emergency tax levy.
Remove approval, seven A.
Second.
Any discussion?
This is the second final resolution, once we have this approved, basically, we'll, we'll send it to the board of elections. I know the county auditor indicated that there's like twenty-five tax issues on the ballot in November already. There's, there's gonna be a very busy tax ballot this coming year, so. But, uh, we need to be on there, hopefully, we can get it passed, uh, first time. No new taxes for our current taxpayer is the key.
And I, I put this together real quickly, just to kinda share with you, uh, because it's a new idea for our community. Obviously, it's being utilized by our, our neighboring district and other districts in the area, uh, so this might help with some simple questions.
Yeah.
It's just some facts, and I'm sure that more facts and information will get out. The example at the bottom, uh, it's just kinda to share you with how the subjective substitute, Rick will, I'll tell you, substitute levy will, uh, uh, possibly collect more money for the school without increasing the taxes for the, the existing taxpayers. Just a little helpful sheet.
I think it's really, I, I really like the, the third, fourth paragraph, where we talk about what we collected in two thousand and ten for the number of students. And in two thousand and eighteen, we collected the same amount for significantly more students. So I think we're being responsible with our dollars by collecting the same amounts, even though we have more students coming in.
There could be a lot more dialogue on the fact of what's recently happened. The state budget, and the fact that we're a capital streak, and we continue to grow, and, you know, our estimates would be that we'd be over six thousand students in my twenty-twenty-eight, twenty-nine school year. So again, educating more with less.
All right, any more discussion? All right, Mr. Jones?
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. Motion passes. We have seven B, uh, four oh three B, accumulated leave and retirement plans. We need a motion to approve that resolution. So moved. I'll second that.
So basically, remember, May, I brought you a new reinstated four oh three B plan. Since two thousand and five, school district had what's called the accumulate leave plan, allows people, when they retire, that their severance could go into a annuity. And sit there, or they can take it out, but in order to do that, that'd be at least fifty-five years old or older. But how the, the original resolution was worried, well, you had to be fifty-five at the date you retired. And, uh, actually, one person this year, they're gonna be fifty-five during the calendar year, but not to date they retire. So in talking to, I think, the representative for OYAT, there is probably actually flexibility that it could be the year you retire. So we reached out to our school attorney, confirmed with her, and she agreed, so really, all they were changing is, we're changing the word, said being fifty-five at the date of retirement is fifty-five in the year you retire. And that's the only change. And this is referenced in our four oh three B plan documents, we had to make the change to say, so that both the plan and document's consistent. So that's really the only change, is, is to make it, instead of the date, it's the year, fifty-five in the year you retire. And we have one person in effect right now, so if they approve this, they'll be able to put it away and save us some tax dollars. So I ask the board, please approve it.
All right, any more discussion? Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
All right, that motion passes, we have seven B, the concrete work at Aetna Elementary School.
C and D could go together if you want.
Okay, that's fine.
They're both really urgent assessing language, and we can talk about separately, and they could be voted if you want to, or separately, it's up to you.
Nope, that's fine, seven C and D, like, the emergency work at both, uh, Aetna Elementary, and this middle school swing space for Kirkersville Elementary. We need a motion to approve both of those? So moved.
Second.
Go ahead.
Okay, the first one is that we've talked about the concrete work around Aetna Elementary. We just don't have time to bid it, we, we've received one quote, the quote was sixty-three thousand dollars, obviously, it was over the bid limit. Kevin Paskins, our maintenance supervisor, worked on getting three bids, he doesn't have three bids yet, he's working on it. So I'm asking the board to approve it with a, not to exceed seventy thousand dollars, for the, for Aetna Elementary to take out that center island, and then to fix the concrete work. With us negotiating a contract with whoever the low, best bidder is, as long as it's under seventy thousand dollars, and we believe will be, but we just don't have three, three quotes yet. So we're asking the board to, that's what the first resolution is. Second one goes back to the Watkins Middle School, what, uh, Ms. Taggart spoke of, is basically, right now, the OFC's him hauling around, we don't know what they're gonna do, but we don't have time to wait on them. So this allows, would allow us to basically go ahead and award the project to Robson Construction, because we actually, we did bid it out, we got quotes during the CMR phase of the OFCC project. And they got quotes on the work for the, around the high school. So the C, it's basically still the GMP they pretty much approved, two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. But it's going through urgent assessing versus the CMR project, hoping that, reserving our right to actually hopefully bring into the project at some phrase. But right now, it won't pay for it out of program print money. To get it paid for, to get the work done, so hopefully, as much as they can be done before school starts, as we can get done, hopefully, the roof and some of the paving. Obviously, we know the HVAC won't be ready yet, but at least we know it's on the way to get fixed. So that's what the second resolution is, the board authorizing. And that's two hundred and forty-seven thousand, it's in there, two hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars.
Would we be able to do, go back to the OFCC for Aetna?
No, because it's, um, we don't believe it's part of the, the project, you know. Yeah, I don't think we could.
We're actually just, we're actually just knocking out that center because of an injury.
Yeah.
We're not even putting it back, in case there is some renovation, changes made at Aetna.
Seven, seventy grand to knock out that center?
It's to knock it out and make it, uh, reusable area, it's the bus, between the, the cars and the, uh, the buses, uh, that area that's been crumbling. So remove that, and put in probably the four fifty-sevens, so that it's a nice solid feature, then we have to put up some kind of, uh, wall, per se, parking blocks to keep them out. But to make sure that as people go back and forth, yes. So ripping that all out, but it also does include some areas around the building, that are in other areas than that particular area, in terms of taking it out, cutting it out, and then replacing it with, with concrete. And again, if there are changes to the Aetna renovation, um, we just didn't wanna put something back exactly what was before, program change it. Except in areas where, if you cut it out, you're gonna have to replace it. I didn't mean to direct.
So hopefully, by, hopefully, with the three quotes, they'll come below that sixty-three thousand, that's just the one quote we have now, that's the one price we're using as a reference. So hopefully, we can get lower and add, but, but to wait till there are two quotes come in.
Is that, is that quote also some of the other concrete work we're getting done?
That's just all the concrete work getting done, the middle.
At some of the other locations?
No, that's just around, that's, that only. Yeah, that's all, is that the only? Any more specific questions about the projects, just, pretty much, warm, safe, dry is what they all are.
Yeah.
It's a combination of that.
Mr. Jones?
This is for C and D. Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. Both pass. We have, uh, item E, band handbook. Are we able to do, if we take the athletic off, or do we wanna do those together, or do we wanna do? If we take the?
We have to untable.
If we untable the athletic one, can we do them both together?
If you want to, yeah. You just have to vote to untable the athletic first.
Yeah, you wanna?
So motion to untable, uh, the athletic discussion, handbook discussion.
Okay. Second. Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. All right, so now we have the band handbook and the athletic handbook. Do we wanna motion to approve both of those, and then we can discuss?
So moved.
Okay. Second.
All right, and how about some discussion?
Well, I, I'll probably redirect this out tonight, and, uh, Casey, you had mentioned last week, you had some que, or last month, you had some questions, and hopefully, they have follow-up that's been provided to you on this handbook, and I mean, if you've looked at it and have some questions, I'm sure they can answer it, if not, we can have additional discussions, so.
I don't have any questions on the athletic handbook, but I do have some questions on the band handbook. On, um, page, or, I, in the highlighted area, the first section, under general expectations, it's, it, under the second bullet, it talks about consequences. And, um, at first, I wasn't sure, I'm still not a hundred percent sure, I do know there's a section, another section later that talks about consequences. Are those related, is that where, are those the consequences that they're referring to, or are there other consequences not listed?
You know, when, when we looked at the band handbook, and we looked at the, you know, trying to align, uh, the athletic, the athletic consequences and the code of conduct, we realized that, that it was difficult. So we did leave some discretion to the band director for these consequences.
Okay.
When you look, when you look at the, uh, at that last section, I mean, there's some, we looked at tobacco, we looked at alcohol, and we looked at drugs. And we, we took that, basically, that discretionary, uh, you know, power from, from the band director, we just took that away, and said, these are, these are, you know, the consequences for these kids. And they were aligned, actually, if you look, I believe, under drugs, his were probably a bit more severe than the athletic.
And then, um, this is just more to kind of align with current semantics, I guess. There's the whole parent responsibility section. Can we add in parent or guardian? Um, because it just keeps saying parents, parents, it's the parents. I just, there's a lot of our students that are with grandma and grandpa, or aunts and uncles, it's just a, you know. Um, and then my last question is also under the consequences section. Um, and I might have to actually look at what I, I know what I meant, but, um. It starts out saying, and I've scrolled all the way down, so give me one second. Oh, here we go. It starts out saying, um, discipline not described in the marching and tribe band student code of conduct on a case by case, and I know that's what we were talking about before. But does this not include all bands? Because other, earlier, we talked about the wind symphony, and the symphonic band, and the jazz band, are those three bands not included in these two?
They won't be, because they fall, because those are courses and classes, they will fall under the student handbook.
Okay, I didn't know, I actually didn't know jazz band was a student, as a class, so that's great, okay.
So those will all fall into, yeah, we talked about that, and those will fall under the student handbook.
Okay, great. That was it for me. I had a couple, I'm not gonna be able to find it, I just know it. Um, I know in what, in, it was under students expect, parent, I think it was parents' responsibility. I think it was like the second to last sentence, it was a question, but it wasn't a question. It, it said, it was something to, is it the responsibility to something, but it, it wasn't, there wasn't a question mark, and I think it was supposed to be meant as a statement. I'll see if I can find it.
That's, we're still on the band handbook, right?
Yes, 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 yes. Uh, yeah. Right here. Yeah. At least that's a section. Oh, is it? Is, is, is it the responsibility of each parent to see the child practices in his or her instrument? I think it's supposed to be. I think it's supposed to be, yeah, a statement, and not a question. Um, and there was also.
Oh, it should be it is, not is it, that's what it is. It's just, that's grammatically.
There was also, so I'm not gonna be able to find this either, a reference to a blind person not being able to paint a sunrise. Do we need that in there? I just thought, hmm, I'm kinda thinking.
Is that, are we on the handbook?
Uh, it was later on. I'll look for it. Well, wait, we can do a, a control pass here. Yeah. Blind. It's under recordings. As the blind child cannot paint a picture of the sunset, an instrumentalist cannot duplicate a characteristic sound.
What page comes that?
I think so. It's on, uh. It's on page twenty-six. I challenge it. Uh, and then my only other question, I know in the original version that came out, there was a couple of, there was two sections that talk about the band director's office. And nobody's allowed in, does it need to be in there two times, are we having an issue with it? But there was two different sections where it was like, nobody's allowed in the band, director's room.
I think you once, I think.
Do I have a point? I think they're using law, I think it is a problem.
I mean, we could remove one of the.
We were serious about it.
Really, really. There were exclamation points.
He's very protective of that subject.
Yes, yeah, I got that. Like I said, if, I mean, if, if there's a specific reason, it's not the hill I'm gonna die on, it just, I took notice that.
I'll talk to him. I'll talk to him.
Okay. That's all I had.
And I asked this in an email, but just so it's publicly out there, the stuff that's highlighted in yellow under the code of conduct, conduct is all newly added.
Correct.
To the handbook. Okay.
Okay. Good, good. All right, and I think since we're doing them together, we're gonna, now we wanna move to the, do you look at, everybody get a chance to review the additions to the athletic handbook? Or the clarifications, I guess? The, bring.
Good with that.
Everybody good with that?
Yeah. Just going back to the fees, last month, we.
The, was that part of this one?
The athletic.
The fees?
Because we had to change the fees.
Oh, fees, you're good on the fees?
Yeah, no, I, I, I'm good with them, I was just curious, I thought last month, we were told that we would get some sort of idea of why some was going up like twenty-eight percent, and some was going up fifteen percent.
I sent the document, or you said, with that show the comparison, and everything to you guys. You can get additional information.
No, it, it's fine, I was just curious.
But that was more of a comparison, the different.
Right.
The different districts, and where we kind of sit, and the fees for the raps, and how they run, and.
Okay.
And, and she was gathering, I mean, she talked athletic records and things like that, I mean, we're, we're pretty low. But again, costs are going up in terms of officials and everything else, and a lot of us control YOHSAA and central district.
The only thing that I, I found interesting was the, the, those were dated, those officials? Had we, we've not had an increase, though, I mean, it looked like maybe we had been holding prices, and those, those were, those were older dates on those officials? And I wondered if they've, if they, I wonder if we should be anticipating officials increases?
I know she said it, officials increased a couple of years ago.
That's what it looked like.
It wasn't just last year.
No, that's what it looked like to me, and that's what I wondered if we had actually been holding prices. And I think we had, in a conversation I had with her once, she said that it's going to have to come. Yeah, and that's what, because it looked like those, the official prices were from like twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen, and, so I thought maybe that we had. And so I thought maybe that we had actually held prices, even though officials had gone up like two or three years ago, so.
Alright, any other questions? Comments? Alright, Mr. Jones?
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. Those pass. One agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation. We need a motion to approve that. So moved.
Second.
Little discussion on that?
This is back about the widening of ODOT's coming in and going to do it for us, and we've already agreed to pay $275,000. This is kind of moralizing that in agreement. The really one unknown number is the utilities, if there's a cost to relocate utilities, we have no idea what that number is. We'll try to work with ODOT and maybe Clay or maybe Julie, see if we can get a number. Because our attorney changed agreement to put a number in there, so we're at least holding something back. Because we don't know if it's going to be a hundred dollars, or a hundred thousand, or a million dollars, we don't know what it's going to cost. And having unknowns, a little, you know, a little scary, but obviously saving, going from two million dollars down to $275,000 to get what we need, all the widening of 40, it is a wonderful savings to the school district. And since we had such agreement this recently, we wanted to bring it to the board, have the board approve it, so that we can sign it, so get it back to them.
That's good. Any more discussion? Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. That motion passes. We have 9A, Board Policies, Motion to Approve the Second Reading and Adoption of the Policies Listed.
Motion approval, second.
Any discussion, questions? Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Those pass. 10A, Donations, Motion to Approve with Thanks.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Jones?
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
And thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Alright, and some superintendent items, Mr. Genow.
Real quick, first is a street fair. Staying an opportunity to the board if they'd like to spend some time in there. Mrs. Perkins has put together the administrative schedule part of it, so if you'd like to join us, please reach out to her. Obviously, there's only so much room in the town, we're hoping to have some displays, so again, it'd be nice if we could kind of spread you out a little bit and utilize that, so. But there's probably plenty of opportunity for everyone, so. She'll send it out, sign up, and we should be good. Second thing I had down was just an update on that calendar that I presented to you last month. What I ended up doing was I took that February 12th date that was in question, I made it a holiday, just as we had in the past. Or it's a trade day in some cases, we would have had to pay some people holiday pay the way it was written up. So we added that day to the beginning of the calendar year, so that it would be before state testing. And we made the adjustments to it. And again, it's provided for you on this, I think there's a link for it. Those were basically changes, everything else pretty much mirrors what we had talked about last month. I'm just asking, again, this is for your information tonight, that normally I go to the union first, but I wanted to make sure it was okay with you guys. A little bit ahead of time, no official vote. Obviously, the teachers may have some input, and if they do, then I'll consider that and bring it back to you. But my hope is to give it to them now, they can consider it at the beginning of August, maybe a little bit during August when the teachers come back and get it adopted. You know, maybe at the August meeting, we can, or September. And then the last item I have is that we talked a little bit last week about vape detectors. And in talking with our school attorney a little bit more, and also the representative from OSBA that does our policies. They both took the position at this particular time, because this is, this is like cutting edge. Matter of fact, our attorney had to do some looking up, because he hadn't heard of vape detectors in bathrooms before and what they actually find, so. But again, he's looking at, and they're looking at the board establishing policies as, we don't want to have this. And then the vape detectors themselves would be a tool, very much like we use search dogs and we use other mechanisms to detect and find these objects. So they believe we have policy in place that says, hey, we can, we need, we can utilize tools, the policy is that we don't allow it. And tools would be, we're going to set up guidelines for the administrators on how they can use it. Just like when we have dogs come in, you know, our administrators do the searching, we don't let the officers do the searching, that type of thing. So we'll establish that through guidelines, so our administrators handle it, we have this from high school very similarly. But there really doesn't, this particular time, now if something changes in law or something like that, then we'll definitely bring it to the policy committee to bring it to the full board. But they do believe our existing policies on suspensions and those type of things would allow us to utilize vape detectors as a tool.
Nice.
So we should think over there. And that's really all I have, I'll answer questions on that or anything else that you might have for the superintendent.
Why didn't you wear your new vest tonight?
For picture.
I won't wear the green one that I have. I save the paintball for special days, but I have also checked into the fact that when I do switch positions, that I am allowed to wear high-vis shirts instead. But I had to wear it the one day, if somebody took the time, thank you, Mr. Jones and the rest of you, that if they spent money, I should wear it once, with a smile on my.
That's Clay's too.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, Clay's idea, yeah. I had no idea what they were doing, I'm going, who is this? It was very, I was appreciative.
Kevin's Paskins was a help, that's, we've got three amigos on that little problem.
I had no idea. Thought Clay was a little funny bringing a package in with little puff paper. Construction meeting, I don't know.
Alright, we have a request to speak on non-adjourned items, Teamsters Local 413, Southwest Looking Education Association. Alright, we need a motion for adjournment. So moved. Alright, Mr. Jones?
Who's second it?
John.
John, okay. Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
We are adjourned at 8:17 PM.
Yeah, we are.